Computer and the wall clock says 7:00 PM. So I'd like to go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, 10 of 2023, if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, would you call the roll, please? Lanyon?
President.
Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins? Ben Ossberg?
Whoever.
Rhines?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I'm looking for a motion to excuse Mr. Jenkins' absence. He has made the city manager and I both aware of it.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Sir.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And now I'm looking for approval of the agenda for this evening, or if there are changes that need to be made.
We'll do per agenda estimate.
So I do believe we need to take something off the agenda for this evening? No, it's okay.
I would propose a friendly amendment to remove Action Item 8B.
All right.
It's something that I've been waiting for.
I accept the friendly amendment.
All right. Not a problem. Thank you both so much. All those in favor to accept the agenda as changed with the removal of Action Item 8B? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries. We have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to come forward, please come forward. Let's see, we'll start with Mr. Hall, or start with Mr. Hall. Come forward, state your name and address, please.
My name's Kent Hall. Live at 509 Red Cedar Boulevard. And I wanted to just bring to your attention some of the thoughts about Honor For All. We have that trail coming through, and that's what our focus is now. We've just come involved with some people that say they can get us maybe some national recognition for just some little monument. They've done such a thing for a dog park. So by golly, we should be able to do something here. It would have to come to you and be approved, obviously. Just like the concept that we approved several years ago, certain things will be done in order. Right now, we're still focusing on that, but I just wanted to throw that out. I don't know that anyone would have an objection because it could be a little bit of a draw. Who knows?
Sure. That would be fantastic, Kent. And as it gets closer, if they're looking for a resolution from council or whatever type of documentation they would need.
Yep. Well, Tom Mahaney, my friend, the West Point graduate, I don't know how long we became friends, but anyway, he's a bulldog. He's the one that started this whole thing with food strikes and so on in Washington, DC, and some of the congressmen's doors. And he got heard and he got approval. And last year, we had 47 states that went along with us recognizing PTSI injury instead of PTSD disorder. We're still losing 20-plus veterans a day to suicide. The negative stigma, that word disorder, has caused a lot of guys not to get help. They're afraid of all kinds of things that has been thrown, oh, they're going to take your guns away, they're going to do this and that. Anyway, so last year, we had 47 states join us. We'll move it ahead.
Well, thank you. We always appreciate the update.
Got a question for you?
Terry?
The dog park idea?
Yes.
Would you make then, would the idea maybe this memorial park part of the, be a dog park or the whole thing? Or what's your thinking on that?
No thought at all as far as that's concerned at this point. This is going to be kind of in the woods, so it's not going to take up any of the memorial park.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not going to take any of the green space away from any other future projects, whatever.
I was just thinking through where we, where we could put that. I was curious what you think.
No, I'm just kind of surprised when Tom was telling me about when we started researching what you have to do. And then you found out that... I know there is a museum, kind of like a cemetery for dogs, service dogs, down by South Lion, actually.
Well, we look forward to the next update.
Okay.
Thank you, Kent. And who's next? Come on up to the podium, state your name and your address, please.
Evening. I'm Jack Smith. I live at 202 East Riverside Street. Came to the council meeting tonight to see if I could get some guidance. I would like the city to develop or have a tree replacement policy for trees that are removed for, as I've learned, the three Ds, damage, disease, danger. To my knowledge, it's been a long time since we've had trees planted in the median between the sidewalk and the curb. I've had some, one conversation with John about this, and he's supportive of developing a policy that would allow us to replace what we need to cut down. And my, my question is, does the council have a suggestion on where I might volunteer my time in terms of commissions? Because I've got the idea that there would need to be a policy that would eventually come before the council. And I don't know where the best place to try to develop such a policy, if the council is supportive of the idea.
Well, thank you so much for coming and asking of that. And Holly, I believe all of our boards are full right now?
Except for Board of Review.
Board of Review. Board of Review is a small commission that meets twice a year, and that's regarding property taxes, but that would certainly be a great start. And then if other seats were to open, you know, we'd certainly love to have your volunteer, you know, your time and talents. But if you're interested and wanted to get your foot in the door and serve on the commission, certainly that would be one. And then I would defer to City Manager Hanifin regarding our tree policy. He can get us the information of what that would look like or bring it forward to council at another time.
I thought about Parks Commission, but I thought Parks Commission might not be the best place, even though they plant trees. They plant trees in the parks, and I was thinking mostly about street trees. So is there a connection between Review Commission and this issue? It doesn't seem obvious.
There isn't. Again, it would just, it would help get you familiar with, with city operations and everything. But certainly, if you, if you wanted to submit an application and have us hold on to it for a time that a seat would become available, then we would absolutely love that. And Holly could get you the, the application. It's also available online.
I've got the application.
Oh, you do? Excellent. So that's what I would suggest. Submit it. Holly can hold on to it. And then what happens is when we do get open seats, she'll ask me if I'd like to have it put on the agenda for council approval. We'd reach out to you and let you know that we'd like to have you serve on, on a board, see if that would fit your interest, and we can go from there.
Is there a board where this issue would best fit?
Oh, goodness.
That's my real, that's my real question.
Planning Commission, because Planning Commission deals with zoning and zoning language and ordinances. So if we should happen to get a seat open on planning, that would absolutely be where that would fit.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a comment.
Yes, Jack. I mean, sorry, Scott.
You can help me, Jack.
Yeah, that's okay.
In his honor, that would be great.
Yeah.
So there was a tree replacement policy draft. It was in the process before I left the first time. I didn't make it all the way through, but it's in the archive somewhere.
Yeah.
You can probably dig that up.
And who, who should I approach about getting the text? Because that would be a great thing to have.
Holly, can we try to locate that and get that to Mr. Smith?
An archaeology project, no doubt.
Probably, probably.
I know that Meridian Township has a tree replacement policy, so I was also going to try to get ahold of theirs to see what they do.
Great.
And for the last couple of years, it's been tough to get people to work to sign up for the Planning Commission. So it's good to have a bench, you know, of people that want to fill in those slots. That'd be a great place. Just, we know you'd want to do that. That's good.
I want to get a tree replacement policy.
All right. Thank you so much for coming this evening. I appreciate it. If there's nobody else for audience participation, we'll move along in our agenda. And I've got our council meeting minutes for March 27, 2023. I'm looking for approval unless there are any changes that need to be noted.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have accounts payable. Brandon, you had an opportunity to review those for this evening.
I did. So we actually have a very small one this week on the agenda. Now, which I meant a lot of repairs. So with that, I'll roll ahead and make a motion to approve checks 76623 through 766692 and ACH 408 through 410 for a...
Yes, Holly.
There's a typo in there. It looks like there's a nine in there. It should be 7662.
Okay. I'll re-read. So I'm going to make my motion for, to approve checks 76623 through 76662 and ACH 408 through 410 for a total of $57,923.06.
Thank you, Brandon. Did anybody have any questions regarding accounts payable? I'm looking for support.
Support.
Thank you. Holly, would you call the roll for accounts payable, please? Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
All right. Moving right along to our action items. We only have two for this evening. The first is the 2023-2024 fiscal year draft budget. And I'm just going to turn this right over to our city manager, John Hanifin.
Thank you, members of council. Mayor Gilroy. So according to city charter, we're required to provide at least a draft budget to council by the first meeting in April. So that's presented tonight for your review. There's a number of milestones still yet for us to cover before we adopt the budget, in particular, the work session for May 8. That's where we, we cover everything in details. And then there's also the, the various public hearings for village rates, utility rates and fees, and then for the fiscal year budget, all marching our way towards budget approval for the first meeting in June. By charter, required to adopt the budget before, the last week before the fiscal year ends, but we'll certainly meet that milestone like we always do. Mr. Meads here, I'm pressure if you have any general questions. Again, we continue to trend in a positive direction with the general fund. We've had utilities discussions about some of the challenges they are moving forward with our, with our larger capital improvement projects that are going to be necessary in the coming years. But we'll cover all of those and, you know, down to the line item details as we move forward in the, in the weeks to come. We did include in this draft budget, and again, we, Tom was kind enough to, in the BSNA function, he turned on the comments section on the individual items. So those are in light blue. And so that will help as you go through your review as we march towards the meeting. In between now and then, if you have any questions for myself or for Tom or any of our other department heads, please do reach out to all of us. But as I said, we still have a lot of work to do. We just, obviously, wanted to meet the milestone of presenting to the council for the charter. It's a little different that the timing of that, you know, it's a little, gives you a lot of time for the original draft and the adoption in June, but you know, I guess it's good that we're ahead of the game and you have the craft tonight, so.
Great. Thank you so much. Say, by any? Yes, Terry.
Of course.
Of course.
This is a weakness on my own part, I know, but this format right here is just, I cannot use it. It's just, is, can I get a printed copy of this thing?
Sure.
I know there's, you know, that's an expense and all that kind of stuff, but for each event, make it a lot easier.
I've got it down to the half page, so. Yes, as I, actually, when I, through the chair.
Yes, absolutely.
When I do my own budget review, I still have to use, I use a ruler and a highlighter. I, it's, it's nice to have this because it's expedient to send it out to everybody.
It's expedient, yeah.
We can get you a paper.
That's true. That's true, but yes.
So shall I stop in sometime, or how do you want to do that? Put it in my box in here?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Put it in the box?
We'll make sure it's in your mailbox.
And I mean, if anybody else would appreciate a printed budget copy, just make sure that you get with, with John, and he'll make sure that that's in your mailbox. If there's no other comments or questions, this is a very simple motion, and I'm looking for that recommended motion.
We'll make a motion to set budget work session for, we need to, we're doing these in two motions. Make a motion to set budget work session for May 8, 2023.
Thank you. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you both. Holly, would you call the roll for the first motion? Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right. Second motion?
Make a motion to set the following public hearings for May 22, 2023. The 2023-24 mileage rates, 2023-24 utility rates and fees, 2023-24 fiscal year budget.
Thank you, Terry. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you. Holly, would you call the roll for the second motion, please? Rhines?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
All right. Our next action item is the Census Water Meters FCC Radio License Renewal. And as we scroll down here, Scott, is this your memo?
It is.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Well, we utilize a company called Census to help us with reading our water meter system, and it utilizes a dedicated band of radio, which has to be licensed through the FCC. So the last time that our license was renewed was in 2015, I believe. We were presented by Census with a renewal form, and it just lists the current council members and mayor, and it needs to be signed by the mayor in the end. So it's just part of our normal doing business and so forth. Do you have any questions?
I noticed my name on this form.
That's why, yes. They require that all current public officials are on the form.
Okay.
And there's no cost to the...
There's no cost except for the fees that we annually pay for the service.
Excellent. Any other questions for Scott?
I did have one question.
Yes.
Not exactly. So I noticed on here that the readiness to serve fee is higher if the pipe is thicker, better?
That's...
Wait a minute. What, what?
Maybe I'm not asking at the right time.
Oh, are you talking about...
Budget.
Yeah. Oh, okay. Yep. We kind of lost, this is for the FCC radio license.
Okay.
Yep. All right.
We'll, we'll cover that in the budget session.
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't sure when to ask it.
But thank you. All right. I'm looking for the motion for this to move forward.
I'd make a motion for the approval of the FCC radio license renewal agreement through Census for the water meter reading system to be signed by the mayor.
Thank you so much. Do I have support?
Seven.
Thank you all. If there's no further discussion or questions, Holly, will you call the roll, please? Gilroy?
Yes.
Lanyon?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Ossberg?
Yes.
Rhines?
Yes.
Excellent. Moving along, we have our discussion items. Our road diet appears on our agenda every time we meet. Do we have an update for our road diet?
We do.
Excellent.
The Spicer's completing the bid tabulation information, the quantities, I just wanted me to say. And they're going to be ready to turn that back over to the city and to MDOT for final review. Could be later this week, could be early next week.
All right. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you all so much. And Spicer, thank you for all your work that you're doing on our projects. Appreciate that.
What's your projected start date for this?
I, we've got to work that part out. We have to get the MDOT approval, and then we'll talk about...
In our next council meeting, hopefully. That'll be our agenda item.
This summer, as long as that's the...
Yes. I would have to, I would have to...
You get the engineering definition of summer.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
Summer 2023.
Till asphalt plants close. Fully intend to do it this, like, according to...
This calendar year.
Normal summer, which is June, July, maybe August.
Well, let's, let's not forget that we are going to present this to the public.
Correct.
That's what we need to do. And if it goes down, because of working with the public, we're going to do that.
Yep. Absolutely. Well, thank you so much for your diligent work on that, Scott. I do appreciate it, as well as I'm sure the rest of council and city manager does. Moving on, for correspondence received, information only, we do not have any, so I'll move straight into our department head reports. And John, we've got your report here, but I'm going to share it over you.
Sure. Thank you. So we did talk about the fiscal year budget planning and the steps that we're moving forward with. Again, the next key one is that our next regular meeting, and that's at April 24th. We'll talk about utility rates. One thing that we're doing a little bit differently this year, we're not having a separate day to do budget public work sessions. We're doing those at council meetings. Those are open to the public. Certainly encourage folks to attend and ask any questions they may have. We have a lot of couple of projects coming up. We talked about those tonight. Ice House continues to make its way through the administrative approval process and zoning process. The next step for that is the ZDA, which was moved to April 18, and that's at 6:00 PM. And it'll be in these chambers, and it was moved just to coordinate some, some schedules and also get some, make sure we should, met the noticing requirements for the public hearings. Assuming a positive result of that meeting, they would continue through the process, and they would either submit either the May or June meeting for final site and approval. Did speak to Mr. Rhines before the meeting a little bit because of his involvement with Jubilee. They do have a trailers sort on site, so we've got a good location, I think, picked out for those. We'll also talk to the other folks that have, I think the Boy Scouts and the Lions have trailers over there, so we'll work with them as well. We don't have lots of room, but we've got plenty of room to accommodate without moving those. Just a couple of other upcoming things. We should have a resolution for AM County grant project, and that's a joint project with Meridian and Williamstown Township for the Blue Water Trail, which is, it's, it's , at its essence, it's the removal of limbs along the Red Cedar in the water over the coming years to make sure that, you know, we made some investments in hyaek landings and launches here. We want to make sure that the river's nice and clear. So we should have that. We have our utilities discussion, and the other line items, bullet points are things that we've already talked about tonight. Do you have any answer, any questions you may have?
Any questions for John Henry and his, his report? All right. Thank you so much. We have our Livingston County Building Department report here in the packet. If you have any questions regarding any activity or work that's going on, please reach out to John, and he'll get those answers for you.
I have a question on that. Does anybody know where Holly Court is? I looked it up on the internet, and it doesn't, I, it, there's one house. What is Holly Court?
Do you know where Pushy's Hair Clinic is?
Yeah.
Down on Grand River.
It's basically a private drive back to Pushy's, and there's a house back in there.
Yep. It's a cute little cabin, kind of.
So like, just, just one street and one house?
Yeah. It's a private drive.
Yep. All right. And then, I mean, Tom, we had your budget in here, but you're here, so any department news you want to share or give us anything?
Sure. I'll throw out a few things for you. Just to be aware, of course, there's been some panic in the news with bank foreclosures out west. They're obviously doing different types of things out there in the Silicon Valley than what we experienced around here. I've talked to the banks here, our reps that we deal with. They said they're nowhere close to even panicking yet here. I've even talked to the County Treasurer, and kind of the same, they, you know, they all feel that that's a combination of the banks out there doing things much differently than the majority of the banks across the country. And also a little bit of political propaganda in, in the media, the way it was kind of blown out. I mean, it is a big thing, obviously, when a bank goes under, but I think there's been other stories kind of thrown out there in the news above other things, about the US dollar and stuff. And so far, the bank bankers I've talked with and the County Treasurer stuff, we're, we don't see any need to panic or fear yet. However, just to be cautious, I was talking to the city manager. I think we are going to open our, go into a product offered by our local bank here where they will still be our primary bank, but they have a way of sweeping money, your access, because obviously your FDIC, FDIC will ensure your money up to $250,000. And the problem municipalities, all where the state has is, you know, very few municipalities are going to have less than that in the bank, particularly when they're collecting taxes and stuff like that. So the banks have worked out the products where you still will deal with your local branch, your local bank that you always would deal with, and then you can set a level. And when your account balance hits that level, the money will sweep automatically to other banks, and they are still our, we'll see no difference on our end. The statement will still come from them. It's still in their hands, so to speak. It's just swept out temporarily, temporarily to other banks to be covered, you know, so we can stay under that $250,000. And then as items are presented against your account and the money's needed, they'll sweep back in. It's, it's just some of the automated banking services that are offered nowadays. So hopefully that will give everybody some comfort, I guess, on the, some of the stuff in the news on the banking side. One other thing I might throw out real quick, speaking of the banks, we did get an email today, or I got an email today, that the IRS says apparently there's, obviously, this time of year, tax time, there's a lot of scams that are out there. They're always telling people to beware of them, but I guess one of the latest is someone will call and either offer to, for a price or volunteer to assist you to set up your account so that you can do taxes automatically, and it'll go directly to your bank and stuff. And they said it's definitely, you know, it's not something that you should fall for, obviously, because it's not going to be the IRS or the bank calling you to do that. They're just calling to try to get that information from you, telling you they're going to set it up, and then you're going to lose your money. So just something that, you know, I don't think we'll hopefully hear anything like that around here, but just something to be aware of. It's just swept out temporarily, temporarily to other banks to be covered, you know, so we can stay under that 250,000. And then as items are presented against your account and the money's needed, it'll sweep back in. It's, it's just sort of the automated banking services that are offered nowadays. So hopefully that will give everybody some comfort, I guess, on the, some of the stuff in the news on the banking side. One other thing I might throw out real quick, speaking of the banks, we did get an email today, or I got an email today that the IRS says apparently there's, obviously this time of year, tax time, there's a lot of scams that are out there. They're always telling people to beware of them, but I guess one of the latest is someone will call and either offer to, for a price or volunteer to assist you to set up your account so that you can do taxes automatically and it'll go directly to your bank and stuff.